Public comments on non-resident items. Yes.
Thank you. Governor's eight blossom lane. I just wrote this down so I didn't sound stupid. Thank you, Select Board, in allowing my public comment this evening. You may or may not know, but the Massachusetts Attorney General Andrea Campbell lost it against the town of Milton at the center stage at the state's highest court today. Lawyers representing the town of Milton and the state presented their oral arguments. The case, as you know, extends from Milton's refusal to adopt zoning changes required by the law. Attorney General Campbell sued the town earlier in the year, arguing she has brought authority to enforce the statute. Milton contended the law provides only for withholding certain grants as penalty for noncompliance. As we know, the court's eventual ruling could determine whether dozens of resistant communities face legal action or can maintain current zoning without any penalty beyond the loss of state funding. The justices today pressed lawyers from both sides on the limits of state power over local zoning and the adequacy of the law's enforcement mechanisms. The court also grappled with the law's impact on local democracy, a key issue in places like Marblehead and Milton where the voters have already rejected zoning. One of the justices, begins with a W, I can't pronounce her last name, questions suggest concerning that enforcing the MBTA Communities Act might override the democratic will of Milton's residents who exercise their voting rights to reject the zoning changes. Just some other brief takeaways from the justices. Some different phrases were guidelines and normally background provisions. Some of the justices use phrases like "the agency has run amok" and "the guidelines are improperly implemented" when probing the import of the fact that the EHOHC did not utilize the procedures outlined in the state law, Chapter 38, which agencies are required to follow when implementing regulations. So the question at hand is whether the guidelines are enforceable. That is what kind of came out of the law today, the court today. And with it potentially not being enforceable, the deadline for Milton would then not be enforceable because the deadlines for compliance are in the guidelines. And there's some suggestion that this might all go back to the EHOHC for further evaluation and review. Unfortunately, we will have to wait for weeks for the outcome, possibly, obviously, not in time for our November 18 meeting. So my question and statement to the Select Board this evening is, would it behoove us as a town to get legal counsel's opinion on today's oral arguments and potentially send a letter to the Attorney General to ask for an extension of our application and compliance to the state until we hear SJC's ruling on the legality of 40A? With many communities not complying at this point and delaying town votes, why wouldn't we wait as a community to vote on this law, possibly for spring town meeting? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have heard you. It's not on our agenda, so we really can't talk about it.
That's why I could speak about it, because it wasn't on your agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. The chairman's report. For those of you who have dialed in hoping to hear about one Spyrock Hill because you haven't checked the agenda, that has been put off for another month, for another two weeks while we are waiting for some legal information. We have on our, also on our agenda, a hybrid management plan task force update. And unfortunately, the chair of the hybrid management plan task force is in another meeting now. We have in front of us, we have received a letter from BION describing the process that they are going through. And I suggest that we wait until we can talk to the chair about what the goal is, what the desired outcome, what the possible outcomes are, rather than spending a lot of time on it. I'm not saying that we pass over it, but we actually like. That's the extent of my report. Are there, other than moving the hybrid management task force back onto the list of action items, is there any other action items that we need to consider?
I had a question, because at one point we had an action item to review the pilot program on Beach Street, the parking enforcement, automated parking enforcement. I thought we were going to review that after the season. I didn't go back and check other action item forms, but I thought it was on there. Or are we planning on including it in the discussion on November 4th on the parking policy? It just says resident parking stickers.
I actually thought we would do the stick review as part of the chief's quarterly report.
Oh, okay. So it'll be part of the chief's quarterly report.
That was my thinking on that one.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to know where it was.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Okay. Caitlin Pelletier.
Yes, I think she's coming in. Yeah, she's, she's on Zoom.
Yes, I'm present.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Could you start by just giving us a very short description of why your, what your interest is in this committee and why you think it'd be particularly good for it?
Yes, so I apply to be a participating member on the town welcoming committee. And my experience with the town welcoming committee actually happened for the first time when I moved to the town last February. And I received a plate of cookies and a nice card welcoming to the town and with contact info and a nice letter saying that if you need any help, you'd like to be shown around. We have people who are willing to do that. And I was very impressed also by, there's a paragraph in there about pairing students up with like-aged peers. And I thought, I've never lived in a town that's had a welcome committee, so I was impressed by that and I felt welcomed. And I recently saw that they need volunteers to participate on the committee. They've had a few people decide they wanted to leave. And I thought it would be a good opportunity to contribute and to get to know people in town. My background, I come from a teaching, I'm an educator, former educator, and I worked on a similar volunteer committee at school there called the Sunshine Committee. And we did things like welcoming new teachers, hosting events, taking collections for our celebrations, things like that.
Question?
No question, just a comment. It's nice to see someone who's going to be on both sides. You know, has come in and seen how it works and then, so I think that's good.
Debbie, how many programs do we have?
There's three left.
Three left? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to make the same comment as Jeff. I think it would, it would be great to have someone on the committee who just went through the experience of being welcomed. And certainly, it's fresh in your mind what, what went well. And if there's any ideas that we have that we could do better, I think it's great. Seems well qualified.
John?
Yeah, I think my colleagues have said it all. Someone who's known in town, you really have, have experiences as to what's working and what can be improved right now. And I think that's very, very important. So. Great. Thanks for raising your hand.
Last one in. Yeah, I can't add to that, you know.
Okay, well, I'm going to. I'm going to channel Becky.
Well, it was my job. I'll get the next one.
A former member of the Select Board always asked every volunteer, do you have enough time to do this work? Are you currently working? Is there anything that is on your schedule that might interfere?
Not that I foresee. I work usually nine to five hours. I have a flexible schedule. And after work, I just have commitments that I choose to commit to. So different classes and things like that. So I do have the freedom and the leisure to participate and the time.
Okay, that's been done. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move to Select Board and appoint Caitlin Pelletier to the welcoming committee for a term to expire on June 30, 2027.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Can I say yes?
Thank you. Caitlin. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I hope you enjoy being on the committee and I hope it inspires you to get more involved with the town.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tyson Goodrich.
Not virtually.
Not very welcoming.
He was notified.
Okay, well, we can put off, notify him again and then put him on the next meeting if he's still interested. All right. And now we have seven minutes or so. People are supposed to talk about whichever house. We are on the case. Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I don't know.
We're just flying right through this, aren't we? Such a efficient meeting.
Anybody bring a deck of cards? I have a couple of updates. I did finally get back to the school committee. They are, they're doing the sorts of things that they often do in the fall, which is to review programs. And, and that really is an area where the Select Board has very little to do and very abolish. Of some interest is that they are working on a new policy for their reserves. They have reserves of a variety of forms. I think they have spent down their old choice fund completely. And that's not renewed because the choice money that comes in from choice in students is spent in the year that it comes in. But they have other forms of reserves. And they've, they decided to pick, actually, they haven't decided. They're discussing whether they should have a range of, they should measure, they know that they want to measure their reserves against their annual budget. And they're wondering whether they should have a range of percentages, you know, lower bound and upper bound, or whether they should have a target, a single target. And they're talking about keeping eight, eight percent. And that will, that will continue to talk about that in future meetings.
Yeah, I think eight to 10 is what people want to be.
That's. There's some discussion that, that they don't need as much because the towns also have reserves. But the school can spend its reserves on the vote of the school committee, whereas the town reserves would have to go through a town meeting. So if there were to be a crisis, it's, it has, there's some merit to their having money of their own to spend. And one of the crises might be that there's a failed budget and they go on a, what they call a 12/12ths, which is the, yeah, where they spend only a 12th of what they spent the previous year each month. And, and depending on when it hits, it can be very awkward. Because you really don't think they will.
I appreciate it.
That's kind of where that is. And that's really the only thing that they're working on that I heard about that made me. Okay. The consent agenda. Anything anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that the Select Board approve the consent agenda items.
Discussion?
I have one question I might ask, Greg. Would you regard the consent agenda on, on the vehicles for the council on aging? That leaves us with three vehicles, Greg.
That's correct. The two mini buses, I guess, to call them, and then the one man.
Right, one of which is electric, the other two are regular gasoline power. Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure what the count was. Okay.
I have a question just for my own interest. Municipals, do they get, they get a percentage of the auction? How mu, how much, what are the auction fees and does that work?
We typically have, well, we've done, we've done it on our own most of the time, but we have used the municipal process as well. Not remembering their, their cut.
It's usually a percentage.
Right, it's a percent of the, of the sale. And I'm, I'm not remembering what that is. I can certainly get that for you.
Yeah, it's not important. I was just curious.
I'm surprised a hundred thousand miles is, is the full life on a vehicle, because both of those vehicles are around a hundred thousand miles. I guess they're hard miles.
Yeah, they're hard miles and they, sitting out back here hasn't, hasn't helped their life.
Yeah, the rust is what.
The rust is the problem. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The 10-year-old van.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's about.
And it's, it's part of the replacement cycle that the state provides. So they, we get 80%, a grant for 80% of the cost of a new van. We're giving the cycle off hands five or six years or something like that.
Good.
Interesting. A lot of miles for two vans to look just basically in-town driving, isn't it, for the most part?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, they do, they do go to doctor apartments.
But still, I mean, it's, it's 20,000 miles a year that the two vans are putting on, plus whatever we have in the other ones too. So these things that they're using.
I know that there's a renewed advisory about the electric ones and the salt water. If you're parking it out here, then I guess in Florida, the storm surge, when they come up on, there's something about car batteries and salt water.
Yeah, I think something about water, salt water, anything.
It's not you, just the electrics.
I don't know, not that bright, but I think. It's not to put salt water or anything.
Exactly.
For the record, your name and, and address.
Oh, Dean Nahadis, 48th Beach Street.
Thank you.
Well, for all the electric vehicles parked back there.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're welcome. Okay, we have not had a vote on the consent agenda. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes.
Yes.
Brian says yes. All right, now it's 8:56. And the charter house revenue increase. Does anyone have comments on that?
So again, the basic proposal here is to increase the fees of both the weekday and the weekend rate by $50 from where you come from. So that would go to 325 for the weekday and 375 for the weekend for residents and then for non-residents.
Are they going to have some with non-residents?
We previously had raised it for non-residents and it was staying.
It's 750 and 850.
And as the, it was mentioned at the, at the meeting, as Cheryl pointed out, revenue's down. These, the charter house. I hope we're trying to balance things out or make up volume.
I'm sort of surprised that the revenues are down by a lot more than it appear from the number of rentals.
It must be weekday versus weekend?
That's the only thing I can think of, but.
Or more non-residents are rented.
Well, it's six versus eight. In '22, they did have 19 non-residents, but.
Yeah, did, was there any discussion as to why?
Well, they were coming out of COVID, I think, was the big thing, was that all of a sudden, people are finding other places to go.
That's what I'm wondering. Is the competition cheaper?
I mean, there's too much, I don't think there's a lot of, you know, not a lot of data to support the speculation, but that was the first thing that came to mind. Yeah, makes sense.
You, you, you can see the drop from '22 to '23. You can attribute a lot of that to non-resident rentals. But from '23 to '24, I don't know. Like Ann, I, I can't see without that, that drop came from anywhere except weekday rentals are up and weekend rentals are down. I don't see otherwise.
We don't do anything to advertise or, okay, so this is all word of mouth. This is for non-residents, non-residents. I mean.
Yeah, we're not, we're not promoting this one way or the other.
Is there a reason why we haven't? Is it because we usually get enough, you know, interest to cover costs of maintaining it or?
Right, so usually, usually the weekends are, are pretty booked. I mean, in the past, you know, there's been a line and people sort of pushing elbows to try to get to the front of the line so they get their first choice. That has waned. We haven't, hasn't been quite the lineup for, for getting on that calendar early as there used to be.
So what, what kind of costs are we looking to cover?
So our, I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, tux point in general, all costs in, there's probably in the $50,000 range.
Greg, this, this money goes into general revenues. There isn't a revolving account or some sort of enterprise fund or anything. Is that correct?
Correct. This is general fund revenue.
Yeah, okay, fine. So it's, it's a little harder to assign dollars in, dollars out. It's just, okay.
Yeah, I get, I think that's the reason for my question.
I think so.
You know, it's.
I could see where you were going.
I mentioned somewhere, I saw somewhere about, you know, wanting to cover costs, but one of the costs, I don't, I don't really see that.
So this income line, that's after costs?
No.
No, it's just straight revenue.
It's just straight revenue. Yeah. So it's just, you know, how much do you associate with the cost of tux to the charter house versus rotunda, the beach, the restrooms? You know, so that, so I'm giving you the all-in expense of tux point.
But not including every few years when they have to rebuild it?
Correct. Yeah, that's, this is operating on capital.
Is there a particular rush to make this decision tonight? Because I just was curious, is, if we're going to, you know, if there's been a decline in revenue, it makes sense that one thing you look at is increasing the rate. But you may also want to do other things, like, for example, promote it, advertise it. That also incurs costs. I'm just trying to get a handle on what the costs are that we're trying to cover and is that the right number? I don't know.
I'm looking at this and I think that 2021 to 22, which are COVID and coming out of COVID. Okay, all the other numbers are consistent. Okay? '23, '24, pretty much consistent with '16, '17, you know, they're all. So.
As far as revenue, I agree with you.
As far as the, I mean, I don't know, as far as promoting it goes, you know, I think being an outdoor venue during COVID and coming out of it was.
Popular place.
Popular place for the surrounding communities, but now they've got other options again.
I mean, maybe it's, we do both, we raise it and we have it.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, number one, is there a sense of urgency on making a decision tonight?
You could delay it another couple of weeks.
Because I just would like to understand what costs we are trying to cover. You said, you know, not the rebuilding, but what are the operational costs that we might be interested in? Because if you're going to raise it, you want to make sure you're hovering the desired costs. And I wouldn't want to do that every year, you know. I just feel like I need a little more info, but.
So you think a 50 is not enough?
I don't know, because I don't know what the costs are, so I.
Well, I think the only real cost associated with that would be the parking attendant.
We don't have one.
No, but they keep, they're somewhat up there.
So we don't, yeah, we're not.
I mean, so there's.
It's been a few years since we've had a person actually checking cars, but we do have a person maintaining and cleaning and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I would, I mean, there's got to be some maintenance on the bill. I just, usually, before you set a price, you understand what your costs are, basically.
We can have a detailed presentation of that. It's your next meeting.
Even, even a little memo, I mean, just to.
Probably.
Greg?
Who's the, John, do you have something?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question. I'm just looking at the trends here of the rentals and, you know, there are blanks there from '16, '17, '18, '19. I'm not sure, maybe records weren't kept. But one thing I would like to know is, we have a fixed inventory here. And I don't know how many spaces there are to rent versus what's going on. We may have reached the ceiling. And, you know, I mean, if our inventory is X and we're at 90% of X.
Yeah, like I say, certainly, weekends, summers are pretty, normally pretty booked.
Yeah. All right, and I, I just don't know. I mean, like twice a day?
Yeah, it's typically a morning, a morning rental and an afternoon slash evening.
No, no, so, so on the, on the weekends, you've got, let's say, say you've got 20 weekends, and so that's 20, 40, that's 80 slots. And then you've got the weekdays. I, I would like to know something about, you know, weekend rentals, what's going on there, and the weekday rentals, so that we can see where we are with inventory relative to what's going on, maybe.
Basic utilization of the asset, right? Your asset utilization, what are the operational costs to cover, that we're trying to cover? And some rationale, using those for rationale for the new fees. I would feel more comfortable with that.
I suggest that we include the bathhouse. Although it's used by the beach, it's essential to the, to the use of the charter house. Oh, Dean, you had?
Well, just a suggestion, maybe to solicit feedback from the renters to see what, whether they felt it was worth it, the price, or what some of the shortcomings were, whether they want better kitchen facilities or better weatherproofing options or something like that, just to see, get a gauge for, you know, how to, to see whether the price is reasonable for the demand.
So we will put this on next meeting's actions? Is that where you end up trying to get the information?
Yeah, that's, yeah, probably this one.
Okay, I think it's.
Correct. I don't know how to.
My name is.
I missed the part about staggered stuff.
Oh, it's.
Yeah. We just wanted to get it before you guys did, so we all have company chairs.
We will bring the meeting to order. So that I can, we have a quorum. The team is inside. So I can stay with the MBTA zoning, because we're doing the final assessment. Is that okay?
Welcome.
Thank you. Not convenient that you have built in a cap. Not convenient that you have built in a cap.
We're supposed to be using this.
Doesn't look good.
What else you got? My wish.
Yeah, so if I could, I'll, I'll call our finance committee meeting together tonight with Lori Creighton, Tom Parkin, Steve Hottas and Andy Oldman.
What are your FY twenty-six priorities?
Good question. We should ask that question first, yeah.
Well, I got there while you were thinking about.
Well, I mean, I guess there's almost a perennial goal of somehow better getting a hold, a handle on capital planning and forecasting five and ten year look ahead. We have that now, but, you know, somehow it ends up being fractured as we go through it, I'd say, despite, you know, everybody's best efforts. So we've talked a bit about that as a big picture item. And then, you know, generally, you know, the focus is on, you know, this, the major budget item. Police fire, DPW and the school. And with our focus this year with liaisons is actually kind of pairing people up on finance committee, finance committee to meet with each of those entities, or at least. Yeah, so each of those just to, so that there's a little better perspective that we can bring back at a meeting before we're about to meet with those, those groups. So big picture, I'd say that's kind of tactically how we're looking at things.
What are, do you have in the one, five-year range for capital? That question?
No, no, I, I would say without a list in front of me.
Okay, yeah.
Separately list them out. You know, all the favorites, central culvert, culvert. I know there's.
PFAS, I'm reasonably sure. Relocating the DPW.
Yes, yes, all that and more.
Continuing to work on pipes.
Yep, yep. And, you know, as well as, you know, I think resiliency certainly enters into the conversation. People are in relation to the police department. And, you know, I know, I don't know if we've kind of formally had a discussion, but I've certainly wondered whether or not the discussion of any sort of DPW facility ought to, you know, there might be some merit in trying to factor in public safety at the same time. Whether it's a common facility or shared site somehow, I think it's worth looking at those things. There could be some cost benefit, kind of combining those things rather than having separate, two separate projects.
And the climate resilience too, it's less than the water treatment.
Yes, yeah.
The wastewater treatment? Yeah. Greg, I thought we had funding for much of that. Resiliency of the wastewater treatment.
So most of the funds are upgrading old equipment. Part of that upgrading will include elevating electrical equipment and junction boxes, that sort of thing. And some, I would say, short-term floodproofing, but not the, not the long-term real floodproofing of the plant. That's probably a sixty-eight million dollar project as a standalone. If, if you want to keep the plant where it is and basically build a dike around it, that's going to keep out the water. So I think the shorter-term efforts are, they'll be underway soon. It's still in design phase, but we're getting ready to go off to bid fairly soon, this, this winter. And, you know, the hope is that that buys us, you know, twenty years' time. And then, you know, what to do as we get closer to that twenty-year mark. Do we decide to try to harden existing plant and put in that major dike? Or do we think about relocating the plant? Neither, neither option is inexpensive. Relocating and building a new plant is very expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
But nonetheless, it's, it needs to be on the table.
One of our challenges is, and Andy mentioned this, is the capital plan. You know, it, it changes from year to year and you asked about five-year plan and the ten-year.
I actually didn't ask about the ten-year plan. I was very careful about that.
I know you were. But, you know, because things happen, you know, I mean, you've got permitting issues with state and things just move. And I think we find it very difficult to look at a capital plan over any more than a year sometimes because something gets delayed and carried over to the next year. And, and this is sort of a constant issue. And I think we found that the town's sweet spot is working at about three-point-one, three-point-two million in capital a year. When you go beyond that, you know, this, too many streets get dug up, too much equipment is moving, it's just hard. So how do you, how do you do this, three or four million a year and, and make it continuous? And I think that's one of the things that we as a finance committee have struggled with because it seems like each year we come up to annual meeting and it's like a snapshot. Okay, this is what we're going to do this year, but we didn't do this last year and we're hoping to do this next year. It's very hard to get sort of a multi-year run on it. And I, I think we're trying to make more of an effort to really look at five-year plans and see what, see how that affects, obviously, the tax rate, debt.
So the real challenge there is with the bigger facilities, because those have, A, they're big, big ticket items. And B, that it, there's a lot, there's a long lead time on those. You know, so, so what, we will be presenting in a couple of weeks that the five-year plus major facilities out to twenty, I think it's twenty, forty-five or fifty. And it will identify a new DPW garage, a new public safety facility, a new sewer plant and a new school in that thirty-year timeframe.
Another new school or just Essex?
Essex.
Oh, Essex, okay.
And, I mean, that's, those are, like I say, those are big ticket items. So you're looking at substantially new, new bonds, new bonding to do that. But I'm, I'm hoping to show progression that, that, you know, you need to make a political call as to whether or not that's palatable. But there's a big hit, meaning this, it's in the six percent range of the tax increase in a couple of years, couple of three years for the elementary school in Essex plus DPW plus PFAS. Those three require a big increase to bond for those. And then, and then as things come offline, as we retire debt, as, as new construction, as new tax base grows, you're able to take on the subsequent projects down the line.
I think it's worthwhile, the discussions that have, you know, a sense of willingness to re-categorize and reprioritize certain things. Like DPW has certainly been talked about for a while. There's, there's lots of rationale for moving forward with that project, but in the context of all these other capital events that you just mentioned. They, however aged and decrepit it may be, they do have facilities and there could be a lesser project that could happen in their current location to, to bridge a gap.
Or a less expensive project in that location. You don't have to do traditional brick and mortar the way we've done traditional brick and mortar. There's lots of options for facilities that we haven't really looked at in DPW.
You could, yeah, right. I mean, a garage is a different spec than, than an office.
There's, there's some merit to having people who run the business at the business. So some office is probably.
I think the DPW is.
Absolutely.
You can build out office space inside a steel building.
Exactly, yeah. Lots of towns, Carlisle, Chelmsford have all done fire stations and other things and using very different approaches. It's worthwhile making sure we do that due diligence because everything doesn't have to cost twenty-five million dollars. I'm interested in seeing what, you know.
I like that idea and I'm, I'm willing to stop thinking about just a municipal center.
Yeah.
All right.
I thought that's a town hall.
Oh, not anymore. If we put, you know, as you say, public safety and DPW together on a, we've got to find a site that's old times, like picking up.
Silverstone Stables.
So, but these are things that I think that if we start thinking in that direction as opposed to, you know, it's bifurcating, this has to be here and it has to be there. I'm willing to start thinking about, maybe make some sense.
I also think we've got to really push hard on, on requirements, right? Because right now it's kind of a wish list and I haven't seen the evidence of, you know, I, I don't just have, we haven't gone down to that level of detail. How much space do we need versus what we want versus what we have now? Usually the first request is a lot larger than what we have and you really get to push hard on that. And I just don't see the evidence that that work is done yet, which is very important for these projects.
Oftentimes it'll happen when you're, when you're higher.
Or. True, but if you're taking a different approach and doing something more, you know, prefab or some other building technique, you got to get into the requirements even before you pick the, the approach or pick the partner, the supplier partner. But you may, maybe a completely different set of people you'd be evaluating, a completely different set of companies you'd be evaluating. You really want to have a good deal for, especially in a very mobile department like the DPW. Yes, they're going to, there's going to be some administrative space needed, but not nearly as, as much as people who are sitting at desks all day long, right? So, you know, it's a very different environment.
Yeah, you could, you could pursue it as a design build project when the contractor that hires the design firm, keep, keep the budget tight that way. Also, I mean, you know, and I think you're, I think the, the direction you're talking about, the idea that we're not necessarily trying to build something like, like Hamilton built for their police fire, right? This is a building that's going to be out of sight probably, up on the hill and doesn't necessarily demand the same kind of aesthetic concern. I would, I would agree with that.
And just sort of going up another five thousand feet. We oftentimes look at capital lists and, and we're not sure what makes good financial sense, what the political tea leaves say, you know, and things move around. And I think some guidance from you folks and our collective best guessing as to, okay, DPW, sewage treatment plant, road, central street van, what, what order should these things fall into? Because there's the political component, there's the financial component, there's the construction component, there's the schedule. All these kind of things, but I think it kind of begins with, what are the people of the town willing to sign up for to start with? That, that's why you all get paid the big dollars. You know, it kind of begins there with a, you know, a wish list and then we could attack it.
There's also the, we have a health issue with the PFA.
Yep.
And that gives that a big boost.
Yep, as it should.
But I think, you know, just, Greg brings up a good point. You know, Greg, if you're going to show us something in a couple of weeks, right? You're saying focused on capital, right? It is our role to try and prioritize that, okay, first pass. And, and then the next, I, I think it's, we talked about this before, it's really important to finish capital planning around those big rocks for the, for the year before we start having discussions on the pennies after the fact, right? So if we do nothing else different this year, I'd really like to do that. But secondly, you know, in the private sector, when you're dealing with kind of huge capital expenses that we're projecting, the other thing that's done is really looking hard at stopping or slowing down things that are not priorities, okay? And that's where that operational review, Greg, I think, should help us. And I apologize, I forgot the timeline on that, no.
Basically between now and, you know, seven months.
Okay, so I, I think that's a really important input to see, to get some outside eyes on what we could, should do differently to, you want to minimize your operational costs, free up money for these big capital items. That, to me, is what we should be also focusing on. Difficult discussions, but they're often necessary to avoid sticker shock for the resident, you know.
I think some of these things are going to bulldoze their way to the front.
Well, yeah.
Like this Essex Elementary, if the MSBA has evolved and that's the go, that you're going to push a lot of stuff to that.
And we have to also, yeah, what's the next PFAS?
I'm going to agree with the Essex, DPW and the PFAS being the three big drivers. But I'd also like to mention athletic field's still in there because I think, you know, Pine Street Field didn't really fill the void we were looking to. I think Sweeney Park is still, you know, something we really need to try to figure out. And then some interim, rather than, I know thirty-year plans for new public facilities, but in the interim, it would be nice if we didn't have to go through a drill every time we had a flood tide with like the police station and the fire station. So maybe some interim repairs to prevent that type of thing. I don't know if we could put like a wall around the boiler in the fire room so that that doesn't flood out, which would be a critical. If we can put lightweight fill for four feet in the town hall lot and raise the, the boat ramp, you know, those with retaining wall at the, at the garage, something interim that we're not going through like fire drill every time we get a flood tide. I'd like FY twenty-six to look at this.
The, as far as Sweeney.
Yes.
Oh, Brian is our liaison to do.
That sounds so much better when you say liaison. I said, I mean, they are, they are looking at it right now. Okay, we'll have some kind of report, but the question is, the big thing is, is it turf field or natural grass? Sweeney, for Sweeney. And if it's natural grass, I believe C P, C funds can be used towards that. But then there's also the drainage issue. There's a lot of things going on, which they're starting to study that now. And this is going to be blasphemous. I wouldn't, I, I don't, I don't put playing fields on the top of the list right now. You know, we've got to buy this, we're creative, but there's other things that are more pressing than the fields, in my opinion.
The senior center is another one.
And you said it's moving right along.
And, and I think the goal is that much of the senior center is being paid for outside of the tax rate.
Correct, the idea is to, is to do fundraising for the renovation addition, that would be planned for that building.
So the renovation, foraging, all of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Even, even raise money for an endowment for the operation, depending how successful the fundraising can be.
So, oh, you check them.
We might want to put a firewall between what the private funding is for the senior center versus what it is for town hall office space. I don't know if you want to do a fund drive for that, but.
For moving the castle on it.
Yeah, yeah, some of that. My honor be careful about that.
Kind of a little detail point, this is really more for Greg and Andrea, but I feel like as we go through all these budget meetings and trying to get the revenue onto the same page as the expenses would be very helpful. Oftentimes, you know, things like arts and rec, we've got revenue over here and we've got expenses over here. Arbor is another example where revenue comes in and we're sort of always hopping back and forth trying to figure out where the revenue is. And it sounds like a detail, but when you get down to looking at lots and lots and lots of budgets and you're trying to figure out, should we peel a little back on this or should we amplify a little of that, knowing what the revenue and the expenses is really helpful.
To give a really small example, parking meter baits.
Yes.
They show up in the police salaries and the revenue that they bring in shows up someplace completely different.
Correct.
And it's easy to say, well, we can just save a little bit here by not enforcing our parking laws.
I know it's a detail, but it saves a ton of time, I think.
If I may add something here, I look at all of these projects and most of them have been on the table with varying timelines for a couple of years now. And I know that every six months you'll look at it and say, oh, DPW's in the lead. And then six months later, it looks like PFAS is where we're going to have to spend money. I think that if you model this, no matter which project, and the school obviously is a factor there, you're going to have to borrow money at maybe a very similar rate regardless of which project seems to be the leading force in the race from one year to the next. I appreciate the finance committee saying, you know, it's a moving target. I'm not saying the goalpost's necessarily on the move, but the color of the goalpost seems to move. So trying to plan for this, maybe you look at modeling this several different ways with different projects and, you know, coming along at different rates and you still wind up in the same place money-wise or very close. And that's the big challenge.
Yeah, so one of the things, when your debt service starts to increase, you want to look at really controlling operating costs. So that, you know, we do know that our debt service is going to go up, so we really have to be mindful of that.
Yeah. And I think Morris said, yeah, $3 million bucks is what we spend each year for basic capital improvement activities that, well, for lack of another descriptive term, affect our livestock because some street is dug up somewhere. And that's probably, we've been working with that, I guess for now, I don't know, five or six years, it's been a while. And it seems that that is going to continue to go unless we need to look to take some of that money to put into your project, but the pipes are like forever.
Lots of pipes, lots of pavement, yes.
Starting to paint the bridge, as soon as we're done, we got style over again.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a fixed, it's a fixed cost in terms of budget.
Greg, what are the costs to the town of the project?
So, so those monies have been appropriated. About $750,000. For a round numbers of $6 million project. So.
That is, right now, sort of in the cogs, moving along.
Yes, yes.
That was going to happen at a known time.
We should break ground on that project a year from now.
I can't break ground, you seriously mean that?
Yes, yes.
And that money's been appropriated.
Yeah, the town funds are there.
So that's not even on the list anymore, right?
The federal grants or that's not on the list.
You guys, that's, well, we're just crossing that right off the list. We're getting something accomplished there.
Does anyone have anything further?
I think this, I mean, we're just starting.
Yeah, yeah. So I just, I think as a, as a maybe a comment on the process, this kind of discussion is very helpful. I think it would be, would be more helpful even if we keep this level of discussion going. Because, I don't know, the, we, it feels like when we have further discussions within, you know, as part of our finance committee meetings, they feel like they're in a bit of a vacuum because they're not in the context of priorities that the select board might be tracking. So I think it would be good to check in maybe once or twice through the budgeting process this year.
I don't know. Exactly, I agree with you completely, but.
Yeah. Well, and it could very well be, you know, because I know a lot of times one or two of you will sit into our meetings and as long as you can represent what your current priorities are on those items, you know, that could do the trick.
Well, I think it's important, to your point, if we're going to be really focusing though on capital first, right? When we're done with that, we should all, there should be a joint meeting on just that, okay? What did we learn through that process? What do we, we want to put forward? And ideally, we could mature our process enough so that we set operational targets, right? That we believe will be affordable to the residents. You know, we, so it's nice to work from the bottom up, okay? But I wish we could do a little bit more top, a top-down look, right? Because if something's going to be a very expensive, you know, capital year, right? Maybe we need more than the $3 million. To Dean's point, we've got to put some pressure on the operational cost and it would be nice to be able to set some targets for the town hall and say, look, what would it look like if your operational budget was this? And we give them a target. And it's, it's, it's a good way of getting people to think different about what is really a want versus a need.
Yeah.
And I just would like to see us do a little more setting targets, at least so we can get a draft of what it might look like. And we might think it's ugly and, no, we don't like that, but we don't look at it, you know? So, anyway, that would be my wish.
I was just going to say, if you had a timeline that said, okay, PFAS, we're going to try and deal with in the next three years. DPW move essentially year two to year four, you kind of sequence that out like a pro forma schedule or a strong man schedule. Then, then you can look at it and say, okay, how much capital do we need and what's the impact on the taxpayer?
That's what we'll show you.
Now you start to really say, all right, here's, and then you can look at it from the point of view of what's the spend rate, what's the staffing needed, what's the impact on community? And look at it from different angles, but get a start with a plan.
Greg, is that the 16th?
Sixty rocks.
You're going to be doing that? I'm sorry, we're going to be doing that on the 16th? Is that that? Yes.
Do we anticipate any breakthroughs in the housing development? And, you know, I know we've been stockpiling money in the CPC for something to happen as far as.
And the affordable housing.
New board or something, but that might, that might come out of nowhere and be a priority, you know, to blindside us as well.
Sorry, Greg, I just want to clarify, this meeting where you're going to be presenting all this capital, all these capital items, is that at the October 16th bincom meeting? Okay, so there's nothing planned to be presented at a select board meeting?
Yeah, on the 21st when you meet again.
The 21st, okay, so first cut it at the 16th and then you'll be showing us something.
Very similar on the 21st.
I do hope it's more than just similar.
Yes.
There may be some good ideas and changes and, yeah.
I was planning to change it. That's why I used the word similar, but anyways.
Productive and interesting and valuable. Is there anything further we need to do right now or can we wait a month and a half and come together again?
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of information's going to come out on the 16th.
Yeah.
But we're kind of waiting for that. Something we have to tell you.
Well, the 16th is 16th of October, 21st of October.
But I don't want to.
But our getting together again will be after this 18th of November. Because there's sort of a focus on the town meeting.
Yes, of course.
Tends to distract the select board.
Yeah. And I think that timing could make a lot of sense.
I have a strong personal desire to be in the other room. So if we're done, thank you very much. We will be with the, between the liaisons and, 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 of community meetings. Yeah. Where would we be?
Great, thank you. I'll have to do a drink.
So move second.
Bye.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Special family.
So as I remember to you, I guess the main shell is the NPA 3A zoning proposals that are being finalized down the hall as we meet here. Additionally, listed possibilities for some additional articles. First one being stormwater regulations. We are under some pressure from EPA to update our stormwater regulations. We did this, I would say, two years ago following DEP guidelines. Those guidelines were not as complete in EPA's eyes as they should have been in their eyes. And so they are asking communities to revisit, revisit them. So like I said, we're under pressure from EPA to be doing this. They wanted us to do it last spring. We begged for a little more time and they said, okay, do it in the fall. So that's why it's potentially before us here. So that's one. The second one is the potential land conservation deal that Essex County Green Belt is pursuing. You heard information on that at your last meeting. The CPC has since approved that project, is recommending it, has go before the voters. And again, from Green Belt's perspective, they would much prefer to have that vote before the end of this calendar year. And so that's why it potentially is on the docket as well. A third need, could this, this one be put off to the string? Probably could. We have an unpaid bill from last fiscal year. There's some consulting work that was related to the 40B appeal, some invoicing that got lost, with different folks here. And so because the fiscal year is closing, because we don't have enough dollars remaining in the account that we had set aside for this, it requires a special vote. And that is a nine tenths majority vote at town meeting for slightly under $10,000, which will come out of our fund balance, our free cash account.
Just out of curiosity, what happens if the voters did not approve that?
Yeah, we're in a bind. We can't pay it. And the vendor could sue us and then we go through a process of trying to get that resolved.
Thanks, okay.
And a question, if it's on the special, if it's on the regular town meeting in April, does it become a budget item for the subsequent budget year and that doesn't require nine tenths?
No, it would still, because it's a previous year obligation, it still requires the nine tenths. So it would be basically a supplement to this current year's budget, but requiring that nine tenths vote.
So basically we vote to approve it or we wind up getting sued?
Yes.
That's hard.
We've done that once recently.
Yeah, I, you know, I try to avoid it. You know, I don't like these at all. I just, I don't think if we're on top of our game, we don't have any unpaid bills. This literally got stuck in a committee members folder and it didn't come across our desk. So sometimes it happens and this is one of those times. Luckily, it doesn't happen very often for us. We try to avoid it. And then whether or not there's any citizen petitions or not, we have another week or so. It's 28 days prior.
Twenty days.
Yes, is the deadline.
Okay, any word about, is there something?
I have not heard recently if there is.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure.
You had mentioned earlier a change to restrict the use of ADUs as.
Well, that's right. I'm sorry, I did mention that. We talked about that a little bit at the last time. So, yeah, so that is, the potential for that, we would, as a template, I mentioned Gloss's new ordinance, which I think you would find interesting and applicable here as well.
Could you, could you send that?
Yeah, let me circulate that around to all, I meant to do that last week and I didn't.
Short-term rentals, is that what you mean?
Yeah, short-term rentals. So this is because of the new ADU law that's going to come into play come February. Folks have talked about to be keep up our short-term rental ordinance to prevent those ADUs just becoming short-term rental units and really not helping our housing problem.
And I would put in the caveat that somebody would have to start in February, build an ADU and use it as an Airbnb before our April town meeting.
Yeah, you've got a very short window there. You don't have a lot of exposure.
Yeah. But I think we should see what the.
Yeah, let's take a look at it and you can decide if we should add it to this, to this go around. So, you know, if we have four or five items besides the main attraction, you know, I'm assuming the main attraction is, you know, a couple of hours of debate and discussion before a vote is made. And then these other ones, 90 minutes worth of additional effort and discussion, I would.
Whether we put them first?
Right, you might try to get them first, get them out of the way.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's, I think it's doable. I, you know, think someone's going to call the question after two hours. So, you know, three and a half hour meeting, you know, even that's, even that, even if that stretches to four hours, that's not unreasonable. So it seems like we could, we can manage this list.
So, subject to seeing the. So, subject to seeing the Gloucester ADU, we agree that these are things that...
Get them on the way, it'll make the spring meeting shorter, too.
There'll be something new there too, but yes, you can always hope.
Mr. Minister?
We doing anything with the Harvard administration?
We can help that entirely.
Okay.
We, we've all read Vion's letter and, and the questions that we have are not so much about how often we, but whether we do it.
Yes, okay.
Okay, a few items here, just a follow-up, you know, you had your discussion with, with Kate about the potential of, of having them do some complimentary service aimed at seniors in particular. You asked me to just reach out to some of our neighboring communities and they all felt that the service was, was doing well in their particular community, they, they gave Kate a pretty high marks for the services that they're receiving. So the process for joining is, has been streamlined, it's just your decision, you can make that vote, but if you wanted to reverse it, it still requires a town meeting. So it's a little more complicated to get out than it is to get in, but it is reversible if, if that is something that you feel is, would be necessary.
I mean, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with that, I think we heard everything we wanted to hear and be helpful to our residents.
Maybe if we don't wanna use it, there's no downside to still work with it.
Right, some costs, I mean, just redirecting the money.
Still, still would like to see how, how demand is for offering a service later on in the day, later on in the day, because all of these services end in three, and Kate will not change on that.
Right, so we, we would have to...
But we can.
We can, we can.
Yeah, we could adjust our schedule or...
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a possibility for sure. Okay, we'll, we'll keep working on that. Just a quick follow-up on, on, again, the lead survey, EPA, it's a mandate from, from them. They loosened up some of the requirements the other day, we got some good news that some of the penalties don't kick in until 27, I believe it is.
How much, how many, what's the response rate they're looking for before we get penalized?
Well, ultimately, so if we don't have a response, they're gonna assume it has left.
Okay.
So it behooves us to prove as many as possible. Ultimately, we will, we will get that proof when we're doing the meter replacements.
Meters, okay.
But we have a deadline of mid-October of giving EPA our initial response.
Mid-October next year?
No, this year.
No.
Mid-October is now.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Couple weeks here is our deadline.
Doug's heard from like, I don't know, 200, 250 people, he's gotta hear from like 1,600, so he's way short, but as, as Greg says, he's banking on the fact that as we grind through these meters, we'll have hands-on information on everybody, which is not gonna get people to respond to this service.
We're not gonna have that hands-on information in a week, so...
We're not, we're not, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have it, but things go back and forth.
So is he using, like, is he able to use the date of the building creation in order to answer that question?
Right, so that, that, yes, you can use that. So we will have a higher number of, of potential homes with lead, and as we, so, so that number will be established, and then as we confirm when we're in the, doing the meters...
The number will go down.
That number will be dropped significantly, and we have, like I say, a couple of years before we have to start taking action.
Okay.
So it, it's, it's gonna work its way through, it's, it's just not as streamlined, as, as efficient as it could have been. So that's where we are. They, they will, I think they're putting out a communication to, to maybe, because they care in the next week or so, to try to get a few more, so. That's where that is. This morning, Kathy and John were able to join the Zoom call with the recruiting firm. The three of us haven't talked since we had that conversation, but I thought it was a good, a good conversation with the firm. They certainly, certainly know what they're doing, and have established themselves as the lead recruiting firm in the state at this point. They've, they've done about, what was it, 60% of the recruiting efforts in the last five years, and they've established a good database and they know a lot of, know a lot of people. So, I don't know, Kathy or John, you wanna share more?
Yeah, no, they were, I can't think of a deficit, I mean, I think they, they know their stuff, they're past town administrators and managers themselves, lots of different types of towns that they've worked in personally. So I, I, presentation was very good.
Yeah. They did give us a, a proposal at this point in terms of how things would work and the proposal was impressive, and they did say it'll probably be a challenging search for us and for them because it's a very competitive market right now and our geography doesn't help us because they look for a radius of, say, a commuting time of 45 minutes around you, and of course, half of the distance around us is in the water, so we've got that fewer towns to, geography to pull from. So they said it'll be a challenge, but they certainly seem like they're up to the task, there's no question.
So, I don't know if you wanna make that formal at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think they're wanting qualified and I think would be happy to work.
Yeah, I think, I think I would be, if you had a chance to... Did I send out the proposal to everybody?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, let me do that.
I think we need to see the actual proposal, yeah.
Yeah, let me get, let me get the rest of you those, that proposal, sorry, I meant to do that.
Yeah.
You can, you can read it over if you have any questions, either ask me or Kathy and John. So let, we'll get that moving forward. Mentioned some meetings at the end of this week related to the next round of climate resiliency impact work with Harvard. If one of you had a chance to attend one or both, just let me know, and that'll be this Thursday and Friday at 11:45. It's at the St. John's in Gloucester on Middle Street. I can get, I'll get you the address. And then lastly, not on, didn't make it in my memo, but the celebration for Ron Pastor Giacomo's life and contributions to the town, aiming for October 25th. They're just trying to get a preliminary headcount. So if you could let me know if you think that works for your schedule that afternoon, next day or so, they're just, I'm just trying to get that in.
Yes, I do.
An excuse to work on, work on for Friday.
That's all I have for you tonight.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This is very efficient.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Brian, but yes. Thank you very much.
Wow, that's my record.
This is a record.
Yeah, I think this is it.